Hi, welcome to the Village of Buchanan Board of Trustees August 3 meeting of 2021. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of America, which is one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Okay, first on the agendas, they approved the minutes of the June 22, 2021. Oh, sorry, no, May 25, 2021 workshop minutes. Comments, corrections?
I didn't have those minutes in my packet with...
No, I had emailed them to you afterwards, but...
Oh, okay.
We could do them next time if you want.
I did not get a chance to look at them then.
Okay. Those are up to next month. All right, thank you Cindy. The June 22, 2021 workshop minutes.
I have a correction under Lent's Cove on page three. I believe you meant to say trustee Zachary, not trustee Murray. I never talked to the highway foreman or the engineer about work at Lent's Cove.
Oddly enough, I have the same correction.
Oh, that's my answer.
Good.
That's all.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
No, just a...
Okay, a motion second?
Oh, wait, excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry, did you have something Stephanie?
Yeah, I believe on page, sorry, on page three at the top.
Okay.
Where we're talking about the use and sale of cannabis. The last sentence says the village board will not opt out. Is that correct?
Well, I think we should have a discussion on it and have a public hearing.
We had, we were not going to opt out and you said that if we didn't, if we wanted to opt out of the law, that we didn't have to perform any action. So we're not opting out. So the village will not opt out.
Okay.
Opting out requires, correct.
Requires, right, well, that's why I wanted to mention in case there was an error. If you're not...
Well, that was, I think that I remember Sean, Anthony, and myself at least saying that we did not want to opt out. I don't remember if you were with the mayor as...
So you're okay with the sale? Let's get it clear.
That's what we had said because the adjoining communities had not opted out and we didn't want people leaving our community and bringing it in here without any tax benefit. We felt that they were going to be using it in this village and they have been using it in the village and we already have the cost of it, so we might as well get some tax revenue out of it.
Okay, perfect.
That's what the general discussion was. I didn't know that it was going to go any farther than that because we decided not to opt out of the law at that meeting.
Now, if we want to opt out, then somebody has to make the...
So that was just a discussion, okay. Right, because you have until December 31st. I just wanted to make sure I was clear, so I wasn't writing or not writing something I should be. Anyway, thanks. I still think the public should, we should have a public hearing to discuss that. I think it's a change for the village, whether it's here or not. I don't know, we're a residential community. I'm not sure if that's something we need and I'm not sure, you know, there's no guarantee of what type of income is going to come in. So I think, you know, we should do a public hearing for that, at least let the public speak on that.
Well, public hearing would require that there's a resolution to opt out.
All right, then.
Otherwise, there's nothing to have a public hearing over. You could get...
Well, I'd like to put it back on the agenda and tell people they can come to speak then.
Unless you do it at a workshop just in discussion and say, this is what we're talking about this and we'd like input from the community.
Yeah, I would like to hear what the community says too, please.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
All right, so Marcus, please put that on the workshop then for next meeting.
Was everything I just said not heard? It was okay? Thank you.
Okay. All right. All right, so are we good with the rest of the...
Make a motion to accept the minutes as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. So comments from the floor, agenda items only? Okay. The first order of new businesses, discussion on pavilion rental. So I just wanted the board to, for their input on this. There's, there's an application for someone to have a concert and that's something we haven't done before. So I need the board's direction of what they would like to do. Is this something going forward that the board would like to see? So like I said, this is something we've never done before. So we just kind of, I just kind of want some direction. Usually the pavilion is rented for birthday parties. We have some nonprofits that do rented for, you know, events. The town of Cortland will come and have a picnic, birthday parties, weddings, different things like that. So we've never, we've never had a concert, so...
Rich, I just wanted, Nick had brought up about that. I think it's important to find out how many people that they're expecting and I mean, I think term 10 o'clock might be getting a little bit late. I don't know how the rest of the board feels about that, but I would be most more comfortable with 9 o'clock. But I think the big dependent factor is the amount of people that they're going to have.
Well, there are currently no restrictions on the use of the pavilion. As long as all our noise ordinances are followed, I don't see why we should be creating a rule where there wasn't a rule before. You know, this is a village resident. This family has lived in the village for a long time. They're not serving alcohol. I don't see, as long as no law is not being followed.
But the problem is it's an open, it's open house.
Okay.
It's, anybody can go. So we don't, you know, what if we get a really large uncontrollable crowd?
You could say that about anybody.
No, usually the people say, you know, birthday party or wedding, you know approximately how many. I have no idea about what, this band, they may be fantastic and attract, you know, a thousand people. What are we going to do then?
Well, we have no rule of regulation that governs...
I'm not talking about rule of regulation, I'm talking about reality.
Okay, we're, in reality, we're supposed to follow the laws of the Village of Buchanan and apply them equally to all residents. And by putting extra terms on them because you have a question on it, it really shouldn't occur, you know?
Well, it seems to, it seems, well, we should have an idea of how many people they think they're going to have.
They said on the application...
They're here, if you want to...
Yeah, they're right here.
They're here.
Okay, it said on the application, number of people, approximate number of people attending, 100.
Okay, well, then that's not a problem.
All right. And then let's remember as board members, we're here for, to, for the safety of the residents. That's our number one job. So you know what, I, we're going to, I have no problem with trying this. If there's an issue, then we're going to have to make a new policy going forward about having, you know, bands or concerts or anything like that.
Is there, is there anything in our code that prohibits that activity that anybody's aware of? Do we have a code on a maximum number of people that can use any of our facilities?
They have to have a permit.
Yeah.
Because they have amplified usage.
But it still can't go over the noise criteria set forth. I believe it's 80 decibels 10 feet from the property line or something like that. Because we had that issue with the church many times and we enforced...
Right, they still have to have a permit, that's my shame.
We enforced our noise ordinances on somebody who was not following the rules. So I don't see why all of our rules can't be applied equally to all applicants, no matter what they want to use it for. As long as it's a legal activity, you know, I think we should be able to afford this to our residents. Unless we want to set up a whole matrix of criteria of things you have to follow.
No, I'm saying that, I'm asking that, do they have a permit?
Yes, they, well, they have put in the application and they have their insurance, they also have their insurance, right?
They have to have a permit for the, for the amplification of mute, of noise.
And that's something, I don't know if you're aware, you have to have, there's another special permit because I've gotten it for Buchanan Day when, okay, they did that, okay. Just, that's, that's important to have to...
Okay, there's one make sure that's, that's there because, because in case some of the neighbors start complaining...
Cindy, I think gave it to you.
We can say that they have the right permit and they, and they have access to there because all village residents do. That's all I'm looking for.
Yeah, and I don't have an issue with it and, and in no small part because the police chief is comfortable with it. He intends to call in an extra person for that evening, just in case, you know, so that somebody can monitor over there. And I'm sure it's going to be that, you know, there'll be cars and just traffic and routine kind of stuff. It doesn't sound like there's any issue with this. I was wondering if, if we have to call in an extra police officer that evening if, if that's, falls on us or if it falls on the applicant. I guess officially it falls on us, is that correct? There's no stipulation. It's not like engineering fee, time where you could bill it to an applicant, right? It's just that she feels that would be the prudent way and wise precautionary way to go and that sounds sensible to me, so...
So...
Yeah, I, but I don't have a trouble, any problem with the event.
Okay. So then the discussion would be going forward, what if someone outside the village would like to do that? I'm just trying to get clarification on what we're doing with the rental, that's all. So today, you know, we have someone who's a Buchanan resident that is filling out the application. So going forward, is that okay with the board too? Is there, you know, is that something we need to discuss at a workshop? I just don't want a thousand people showing up and there's one police officer there and we're all looking at each other if something happens. That's all, I just, you know, just worst case scenario, that's all.
Well, in the case, any worst case scenario, the...
I think if you just keep it to village residents, then you won't have that problem. You know, and I don't think bringing it outside the village, I think it's good to just keep it to village residents' use.
Well, we do let organizations from outside the village use it, veterans, town...
Yeah, the concert I'm talking about, for concerts and...
For concerts, yeah, yeah.
Something like this that would attract more than you're talking about, then I think we should keep it to village residents' use.
Okay, well, that's the case this, right now, we could discuss that further if, if everybody wanted to, if everybody felt differently, we could discuss it further. But in terms of this application, do we need to discuss it any further? Is there any...
Nope, I think that's it. I just wanted some direction from the board, that's all.
But to tag along on that, we got an email the other day about another application for the birthday party. I don't see that application here either.
That was been rescinded because they was going to serve alcohol and they've, they found that insurance is too expensive, so they withdrew their application to serve alcohol.
But don't we have a, don't we always approve the use of a facility?
No.
Wait, they don't want the, to use the pavilion or they just don't want to, or they're giving up the alcohol?
They're not going to serve alcohol.
So, now I'm confused then because this application specifically says no alcohol, so why...
Because there's a difference, we've never had a concert at, at the pavilion. Everything has been...
All right, I'm sure, okay. And if there's no alcohol, the board doesn't have to approve it?
I don't think there's a rule that says if there's alcohol, you have to approve it.
The board does, but since they pulled, the other, since the other party pulled back their desire to have alcohol, then it could just get approved by the recreation support.
Where's that code? That's, that's not a code in the village.
Pardon?
That's not a code in the village.
We like to do that because we like to...
The village board doesn't have to get involved every time the pavilion is used unless they're asking to use alcohol, as far as I'm, as far as I know.
Is there a code for that? Is that, there a rule for that?
No, that's been their policy.
Okay, so there's no rule?
If you want to, that's something you and the board can discuss.
Okay, no problem.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, and you're welcome to Jonas.
Okay.
You got it.
And what date is that again?
It's next Friday, the 13th, and it's original music written by...
Oh, very good. All right.
Okay.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, take care.
You too.
All right, good. Okay, so next we're moving on. Last month, we passed two resolutions and we were looking for more voter turnout, but unfortunately, there was a misinterpretation of the law. So this evening, we'll be rescinding both. And I also want to let you know it's B, C, but that needs to be switched. So I will start with C. Whereas the Village of Buchanan adopted a resolution at its meeting on July 13, 2021, changing the date for the village election from March to November, subject to permissive referendum, and whereas said resolution should have been subject to a mandatory referendum and therefore requires this rescission. Now therefore be resolved that the resolution changing the date for the village elections from March to November is hereby rescinded in its entirety. On a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Who'd you put down as a motion? Okay, there we go, solved.
Okay. On a question? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So moving on to the second one, let's see. Whereas in conjunction with the Village Board of Trustees resolving in error to change the date of the village elections from March, do we have a double? No, sorry. From March to November via permissive referendum, the Village of Buchanan adopted a resolution at its meeting on July 13, 2021, transferring the conducting of village elections to the Westchester County Board of Elections. And whereas the Village Board of Trustees has now rescinded the resolution changing the date of the village elections, and whereas all the village, although the village transfer the conduct of the village elections by permissive referendum was in fact proper, the Village Board of Trustees wishes to rescind the same at this time. Now therefore be resolved that the resolution transferring the conducting of the village election to the Westchester County Board of Elections is hereby rescinded in its entirety. On a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
On a question?
I have, yes. I, I still think that we could save money by having it done by the Board of Elections and it would save time for the, for the village itself, the workings, the inner core that we, that have to be worked at election night and the days after and prior to, so that's my comment about it.
All right. I understand, Rich.
Well, I also add, I mean, I, I kind of, as I said at, when we had the discussion of this, I kind of see both sides, but I felt that it was something that we should try to see if it increases voter turnout. There are a number of people that wouldn't, don't come out for local elections that do go out for regular elections and, and, you know, it was brought up that perhaps it poses, it puts up obstacles to people running for office because they have to go to White Plains and my feeling is if you want to be a trustee, the least you could do is go file paper in White Plains. If that's, if that's enough of a hurdle, then don't even run for trustee because there's a whole lot more work being trustee. But anyway, if we wanted to do it as a mandatory referendum at some point, we could do that. But unfortunately, the, we didn't realize we had followed, we had done something in error and that's the way it has to be right now.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Carrie?
No.
Okay, thank you, Rich. The next is a motion to open the public hearing to repeal local law two of 2020 sewer rents. This is something we've discussed before. We are, we have, we are looking to do some development here in the, in the village. We've, we've passed an overlay district. There's discussions about other properties. To me, I don't know, to me, this was planning for the future. I know one of the properties we had an issue with, which, which was the sheet rock plant. I am working on something that possibly they can get in the fold with us. So there's a lot of things going on. So, but my thought, now, those are my thoughts, you've heard me before, this is not, this is not a, a tax, this is a usage fee. So those are my thoughts, I've said it before, and anyone else have any comments?
We got a...
Oh, I didn't open the public hearing?
Nope.
I'm just chatting away, aren't I? Okay, and a motion to open the public hearing to repeal local law two of 2020.
Make motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good. So I, I said my piece. Anyone else have any comments?
Yeah, I, I do. I am opposed to repealing this. I generally like taxes when they can be based on usage, that they be done that way because it's much more fair. How would it be if we added up all the electric bills in the village and then divided it up equally amongst 800 homes? That's what we're currently doing with the sewer usage. Everybody's paying the same percentage of their taxes and regardless of their usage. Two people can have the same taxes, one could be a house with one person in it, the other could be a house with six people in it, using six times as much water and feeding six times as much into the sewer system, but they'll both be paying the same. So to me, the way it's currently set up, senior households, for example, where there's one or two people living there and they don't have a pool and they're not watering their garden all day, are subsidizing larger users, not just large families, but businesses, a pizzeria, a donut place, any place that uses a lot of water, auto body shop, you know, I mean, any place that's using water will, will pay for the, their share of the sewage bills based on their usage. And to me, user-based, use more, pay more, use less, pay less. Why should low users have to subsidize the others? So I would be, I'm very much opposed to repealing this law. I think it should stay on the books and I think we should start enacting it. There's, the question was with the sheet rock plant. Unfortunately, I don't think they pay a fair amount of taxes and this will, this will lower their bill a little bit, but they have their own septic system, so I mean, fair is fair. You know, I'd like to see them paying more taxes, but I don't think that, that that is enough of a reason to, to, to not enact this law. So I'll be, I'll be supporting keeping it on the books.
Well, as you know, I'm the one that brought this up because I don't like having laws on a books that we don't use, that we ignore. You had brought up the sheet rock plant. They're our second biggest user in the Village of Buchanan. However, they do not put anything into the sewer system. This sewer rents is for maintenance of the sewage plant. The usage of water is being suggested that all of the water that you use is what's going into the plant, and that's not true at all. Anybody who fills up a pool, anybody who waters their lawn, they're going to use more water and it's not going to go into the sewage treatment plant. Like I said, Indian Point and Lafarge, the sheet rock plant are, are two largest users within the Village of Buchanan and they put, Lafarge puts nothing in there and we already charge Indian Point for its use based on the contract that was signed in, I think it was 1984 and 1987. So we're already receiving money from them for uses of the sewer plant. The other aspect of this law, which I don't like, is that by removing that value from your tax base, it's approximately 25%, I believe Marcus had said, or 30% of your, of the amount of taxes we bring in. So what you're effectively doing is reducing the taxes of the commercials and hoping to make it up on your water usage fees, two of which users you can't even charge for use of their water.
Excuse me, Sean, we're reducing that same percentage of taxes on every customer.
Absolutely.
Residents too, not just commercial.
Yes, absolutely, you are correct. But using your analogies of a auto body shop, they're not taking showers in there, they're not filling up swimming pools, they're not using a lot of water.
Okay.
But they, but they have a reduction in their taxes. You're forgetting the taxes that we take in through all of our commercials, 43% based on the last, based on the last master plan, including the Con Edison substation. All of these people are going to have a reduction in their taxes and a lot of it is not going to be able to recoup, be recouped because they don't use a lot of water. So you'll be reducing the household tax, absolutely, but the average household doesn't pay $80,000 or $90,000 in taxes. I believe the average household of Village of Buchanan is what, around $2,000? So you're going to have a reduction, well, correct me if I'm wrong, Marcus, that's just the ballpark. What's the average, the average taxpayer?
It's about 1,900.
Yeah, residential.
Correct.
So you're going to have a 25% reduction on that, but you're going to, they're going to have to make up for 43% of our taxable income being reduced 25%. So there's a lot of math being involved, there's a lot of figures to be involved, and all of the water that will be being billed as a user fee is not going to be going into the sewer treatment plant. It's not going to be required to be treated. Whenever you see a big steam cloud coming from one of those plants next door, that's water coming, that we're billing them for, that's going up into the air, that we don't have to process, and we're still going to collect the taxes from them. Those people are the ones that are subsidizing your water bill. They're the ones that are helped subsidizing your tax base. That's why people, communities want to have a good commerce, mix of commercial, residential. So I can't postulate a situation where this would be a good value because the sheet rock plant has been in use for how many years? 50 years? I, they're operating at almost 100%. They're hiring third shifts. They did an increase, they did an increase in production back 15 years ago. They put in more water lines, they did a lot of work. They can't put out any more sheet rock. They're using their maximum usage. So I can't postulate any circumstance in which they would come on board. So, you know, I, I've always been for either instituting the law or repealing it, not sit, having it sit there where we know it's not going to be used.
Okay, you, so, but right now, you'd like to repeal it?
Absolutely.
Okay, yeah, well, just the, the idea is not that all the water you're using is going, we're not, this, this law does not assume that all the water you're using is going into the sewers. It's assuming that, that, and it's not perfect, but it's assuming that the more, that in general, the more you use, the more water you use indicates a large, a household with more people and, and that more proportionately, people that, that use more water will probably send more water into the sewer system. It's not an exact thing, it's not like every gallon you come, that comes out of your, out of your sink is going into the toilet. It's a, it's a, it's a, the assumption is that larger households use more water and they also use, and put more into the sewer system. And so it's the, it's, it's a way of, I mean, right now, there's no correlation between what you use and your bill. Everyone pays 26% of, what's the percentage of the tax bill that is the, that is based on the sewage? 19% was it?
It's about 25%.
Oh, 25%, okay.
That's excluding the plant.
So there's a, there's a total amount of money that it costs to operate the sewer system that's a little bit less than a million a year, but let's just say it's a million a year. A million dollars a year will come out of the tax bills based on that percentage and that same amount of money will be raised proportionate to how much water you use. We have meters for the water going into your house. We don't have meters under your toilet, thank God. But, you know, I mean, we're not going to put meters to measure what you're actually sending down the drain. Remember that, you know, it's not just your toilet, it's your bathtub, it's your sink, it's your dishwasher, it's your washing machine, everything feeds into your, into the sewer system. So whatever, you know, it's the same amount of money that's going to come out of taxes that's going to go into these bills. It's not like we're going to miraculously start raising 1.2 million when before we were covering a million dollars through the tax bills. And, and it's not perfect, I do concede that, but in general, people that use less will pay less, people that use more will pay more.
Okay. I have spoken to them and they did express an interest in getting rid of their septic system and coming into the Village of Buchanan sewer line. So I think when Marcus had done this, he assumed, he didn't know that they had a septic system and he assumed that they would be part of the equation and found out after, so that was part of this issue. But I know I had asked what other local laws in the code that we don't use. Did you get time to look through that?
No, it's in progress.
Okay, good, perfect.
I'm looking at different uses that don't correlate with the current zoning of, in the commercial C1 and C2 district.
Okay. And then also, we all know that we've hired a company to review our code book, so we will, we will be hopefully in, hopefully in about six months, I hope they, they reviewed it and then we can really narrow down and look at things and see what has to be removed or not. So I, I, you know what, I, I saw the calculations, Marcus did. Unfortunately, the, the, the other plant is out of there, but you know, we also have to plan for the future. That's what we're supposed to be doing, especially with the change with Indian Point and the changes the village is going through. So I'm going to make a motion to come out of the public hearing unless someone else...
We didn't ask that way from the public.
Unless, unless someone else has something in the public to say? Is there anybody on, on the Zoom?
Anybody on Zoom that wants to say anything, please raise their hand.
How many people do we have on Zoom tonight?
Four.
No hands are raised.
Okay, anybody in the audience?
Do you have the trustees?
I, I just, I'd like to say that I totally agree. I mean, I prefer people be charged by what they use than rather attacked. And it's, it's just unfair to have somebody who has one or two people in their house versus somebody who has four or five, and that they should pay this in the same amount. And I, I don't see any problem with having a law there on the books and, and not being forced right away or put into effect right away. It's done, it's done in all governments in many places.
Oh, and by the way, it wouldn't, even if we kept it on the books, it wouldn't go into effect till the next tax year. I don't think we would, Marcus, I believe you said it would be.
We could, we could set a tax rate at any time.
Right, but I think it would be simple to start it with the new budget year? I'm not sure.
We, the board can, the board can do whatever they want. I'm just saying since it's gonna affect the taxes, I would suggest not to implement it to next year so that we can have the full impact of the taxes being.
That's confusing.
Yeah, so that would, the taxes will be updated and the sewer bill. But that's a board decision, but I would recommend not to do it. That way it can be part of the budget process as well.
Or this, we're going to something else.
Okay, so, on a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I am going to read this. Whereas a motion was approved by the Board of Trustees of Village Buchanan for a public hearing to be held by said village board at the municipal building 236 State Avenue Buchanan to hear all interested parties on a proposed local law to repeal local law two of 2020, adding Article Two, Section 38 to Chapter 155 to the Code of the Village of Buchanan. And whereas said, notice of said public hearing was duly advertised in the official local paper. Whereas said public hearing was duly held at a regularly scheduled meeting of the village board on August 3rd, 2021 at 7:30. And all parties in attendance were permitted an opportunity to speak on behalf or, of or in opposition to said proposed local law or any part thereof. And whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village of Buchanan, after due deliberation, finds it in the best interest of the village to adopt said local law. Now be therefore resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Buchanan hereby adopts. Did I read the wrong one? I apologize. No.
No, you keep going.
You're doing the right one. Okay, so whether we, okay, after, finds it in the best interest of the village to adopt said local law. Now be it therefore resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Buchanan hereby adopts said local law eight, 2021 to repeal local law two of 2020, adding Article Two, Section 38 to Chapter 155 to the Code of the Village of Buchanan. Be it further resolved that the village clerk here and hereby is directed to enter said local law in the minutes of this meeting and in the local law book of the Village of Buchanan, and to give due notice of the adoption of said local law to the Secretary of the State of New York. So, all in favor?
You got a motion?
Can I just have a question? We're talking now about repealing that, that local law two. Is that correct?
If you're in favor, you're in favor of repealing. If you're against, you're against repealing.
Okay, thank you. I, I suggest that you vote one at a time.
I can't hear you.
He's, he's suggesting you vote one at a time.
Okay.
Make a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, yep. Okay, so a motion to, and I just read the whole resolution, so.
I make a motion to repeal the local law.
Okay, all in favor of that?
Second?
Second, sorry. All in favor?
No, you need a second, Anthony.
Oh, you need a second, three, um, second.
All in favor?
On a question.
On a question.
Thanks, I just wanna, because I did bring this up, I just wanted to thank you guys for entertaining my request for this. I, I know it's probably gonna fail, but I appreciate the, the time and the effort to at least discuss the issue that I, that I thought was important to the taxpayer. So thanks. That's all I have.
Are you gonna poll the board one at a time?
Yes, and then we also support the taxpayer and we feel that it's a fairness issue. And that's why, that's, that's our thought. I, I see a lot of new people moving into the village, a home just down the street from me. Always had two people living in it. Now they have six cars in their driveway, so, just saying. So I am, as trustee Funchen's suggestion, I will poll the board. We'll start with you, trustee Murray.
I'm in favor.
You're in favor. Trustee Capicati?
I'm in favor as well.
Okay, trustee Funchen?
Opposed.
Trustee Zachary?
Opposed.
Okay, and I will vote on this. I'm the tie, opposed. Moving on, let's see.
You said opposed.
I said opposed. So it's three, two, uh, two approved, two, three opposed. Okay, the next is consider a motion to retain the services of a PVS construction to perform the work as outlined by the village engineer. Highway foreman in PVS construction proposal for an amount not to exceed $34,900. So what we're talking about here is something I had started working with the previous board. We, I had asked for grant money from Entergy. And we are going to be rehabbing the Village Circle Monroe Park. And on July 13th, four bids for the reference project were received at Village Hall. The work consists of a two-tier stone wall, irrigation work, electrical work, and a new spruce tree. Right now, it's a spruce tree. We'll see which is best suited for that area. Local contractors were solicited for bids in accordance with the village's procurement policy. Other related work shall include restoration, all in accordance with the project plan and is directed by the village. So we had a range of $34,880, which was the low bidder, PVS construction. And the high bidder was $117,500. So also, which is not included in this, but something I, I definitely would like to see. I would like to see a flagpole out at the Village Circle. So I will be working on having a flagpole put into the left, left side of the tree somewhere. We will figure that out. And so this is something, I, I think the Village Circle needs an upgrade. It's, no taxpayer dollars are being expended. I was fortunate to get a grant to do this. And, and everyone has seen what the diagram that our engineer drew on that. And there will be new plantings. I've asked our beautification committee if they would be so kind to do the plantings there. The reason why we're replacing the tree, the tree is dead. There's a lot of rock in that area. The contractor understands that this tree has to be planted. It needs to be, we have an irrigation system. So there's different components to this. And like I said, we did, we, we got four bids. We've got four bids on this. And that's what we're looking to do, a little, little upgrade out at the Village Circle.
I, I think it's a great idea. I know, like, sometimes it seems like an unnecessary way to spend money, but I'm very much in support of these kinds of things. It was me that, you know, fought just to get a few benches on the front, and a, and a history sign on the, at the, for the Village Hall Park there, out front. I think these kinds of things make a difference. I mean, if anyone has seen what they did down by Springvale recently, that was always a very drab corner with a bus stop on 9A where you enter Springvale. They did a, a stone wall with plantings and, and a couple of places to sit. And it totally redefines what you would expect when you go up there. It's, it's like, you know, just that, that little bit of work there, which is not unlike what we're looking to do over here. It just totally changes the character, makes it seem like something special. I mean, these little, these are things that, that signal something and, and also create nice spaces. I think it's a very nice, positive thing to do.
And Marcus, the only thing I, I would like to mention too, the scope of the work during the hours of 7:30 to 4:30, construction doesn't start till 8 o'clock. So mention that, because we don't want any complaints on a village project that somebody is working before they.
They can't set up, they can't just, they can't run, they can't make noise.
Right, they can't, yeah.
Power tools, things like that.
So, be happy to get this started, get this moving. So, on a mo, on a motion to accept the bid from PVS Construction to perform the work is outlined by the village engineer in an amount not to exceed $34,900 to do the, the work out at the, the Village Circle Monroe Park upgrades. And everyone, I'm sure, has seen the diagram on that. Can I have?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
On a question?
I just wanted to ask you, the contractor, are they like a gardeners or are they a construction company?
They're general contractors.
General contractors, okay.
Yes. And their references were checked by you or by the engineer?
Yeah, George knows them very well. He's worked with them in the past.
Oh, excellent.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Look forward to get this, getting this started. So we have a new Christmas tree for Christmas time. Okay, the next is a motion to consider services of Jim's driveway ceiling, crack seal, overall seal coating remark, and remark all parking spaces for an amount not to exceed $7,500. Jim's driveway is the lowest responsible bidder, so Nick brought this up. He thought it was time that we seal coated the village parking lot.
So we don't have to pave it.
So, yeah, we can prolong the life of it. So also, the engineer recommended Jim, Jim's driveway crack sealing because I understand he's going to also be doing the cracks also. Okay, good, which is great.
Yep, I've, I've used them and they do a very good job.
Okay, so, on a motion?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
On a question?
We, we budgeted for this, right? We put that in the budget?
Oh, I think we have it.
Yeah, we, we have enough money in, in the paving program to do this. That's part of the paving.
I thought we had discussed this during the budget hearings.
Yeah, yeah, we were originally gonna talk about repaving everything.
Yeah, I see, yeah, okay, that's all.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks for bringing this up, Nick.
Aye.
Okay, the next is, there's a special play, pay plan for all eligible municipality employees. And that's BENCOR 401A. And once again, I'd like to have Marcus discuss that.
Sure, we discussed this at the last workshop. This is a, a federal program called 401A Special Pay Plan that allows employees, if they retire from municipal government at the age of 55, for, for all non-police officers to defer their, their federal and state tax until they withdraw it and also exempt FICA Medicare tax for the employees. And that also exempts the FICA Medicare tax for the, for the municipality. So there is no cost for the village or the employee, but both the village and employee also saves the 7.65%. So this motion is adopted tonight. The, all the teamsters have agreed to move forward with this. The building inspector has also wanted to join the plan as well. So this will open up for that. And then if the police officers want to join in the future, they may as well if they like to. So this will open up the door for anybody that wants to join the plan. And this is a mandatory, mandatory plan. So all the money will go in there. And then when it withdraw it, it'll be taxed on the federal and state tax table when they withdraw it only.
Okay, good. All right, so it's a win-win, and we like those. So on a motion, on a motion for the implementation of the BENCOR 401A Special Pay Plan?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
On a question? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, the next is another thing with the sidewalk on 9A. We got a lot of construction going on here in the Village of Buchanan. So the state, the state decided to redo the sidewalks that are existing. So what you're seeing now are existing sidewalks that are being rehabbed. What we have here is we've gone for a grant, a state grant, to do a sidewalk from Blakely Avenue to the deli, to the store, the gas station there, just before you get into Tate Avenue. So we've been working on this for a while. There was some back and forth. We had come up with one price, and then the state had asked for more, more things to, to add on to the project. But finally, we have complete, we will have complete funding for it. So there'll be no taxpayer dollars expended once again on this project. So the engineer has been very involved in this. Let's see. The work consists of the removal and construction of approximately 500 feet of concrete sidewalks and concrete curbs, pedestrian ramps, rubblestone masonry wall, riprap drainage, catch basin, stone mortar pipe, box beam, guide rail, removal of asphalt, concrete retaining wall, loose rock and paving. The project is located on the west side of Albany Post Road, New York 9A, starting from Tate Avenue, ending at Blakely Avenue in the Village of Buchanan. Other related work shall include traffic protection, preparing, restoring and cleaning the project area in accordance with the plans and specifications as directed by the engineer and village. Coordination with New York State Department of Transportation is required and expected throughout the duration of the construction project. So we have a bid analysis here. The low bidder was Contech Construction for $294,460,000. The high bidder came in at, give me a second, $378,350. So we're going to be approving this evening Contech to do that work. And our engineer would like to, the board to approve the award subject in order to start the project as soon as the funds are released. This seems to be a recurring theme with the state. It's releasing the funds, because we're still waiting for the original, the original grant for the pavilion that we got for $125,000 from Senator Harkam.
Two and a half years ago.
Two and a half years. But because of COVID, et cetera, et cetera, but I've spoken to the senator. Marcus has, has spoken to his contact people. And the money, we, we are still getting the money. And we're trying to push it because as soon as camp gets done, we'd like to have this wrapped up in the fall. So we're still moving that forward. So that'll be good. There were some necessary upgrades that we also needed at the pavilion. So we're, we're grateful for whatever, whatever grant money that we can get, we'll, we certainly will take. So, on a motion to accept the bid for the construction of sidewalk and relate, related items on 9A to Contech Construction not to exceed $294,460. On a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
On a question?
Yeah, one question I have is, sometimes this grant money comes with strings attached, like the CDBG grants we used to get, the HUD grants, as well as the American Rescue Plan grants. Some of these grants are tied to zoning issues. How are we going to know what strings are attached to this grant money?
You can check that.
The good news is, these are special allocations from the senator. So there are, this is not a federal grant. This is the money they have available to give to local municipalities, so there's no strings attached.
All right, so there's no special form, no special rules?
Wants you to paper what your project is gonna be, to allocate money, they give away to other municipalities throughout the state. And there's no string attached. All you guys meet the deadline.
So does this come from a specific senator or a specific congressperson?
Uh, yes, this.
The roadwork on 9A comes from Assemblywoman Galiff. The money, the $125,000 that we're waiting for the pavilion comes from Senator Harkam. Also, I got a call the end of last week that we are getting an additional $100,000 from Senator Harkam this year. But solely for capital, capital projects, so.
So who, who does the sidewalks come from?
This is Sandy Galiff.
Sandy's, okay, yeah, thanks.
Yep, yep, yep. I know the village has, has taken money before and got themselves into situations where there were things tied to it. So that's not something I'm interested in, in doing, and I don't think we should be interested in doing. I don't like when things are tied to, to money.
And initially, the grant for the sidewalk was about half of that amount. And then when the state reviewed our plans, they decided that the sidewalk required some changes to the drainage that we had to do, put in some, some drainage to feed into the, into a stream. Well, it's more like a swamp, whatever that is there behind the gas station. Doesn't look like, it flows. It looks like it's, it's like a low point that sits. But whatever it is, they imposed another regulation that doubled, almost doubled the cost. And Assemblywoman Galiff was able to attain that balance for us as well, so.
Just for the record, the original grant was $150. The new grant with everything is $380.
$380 or $280?
$380.
Which is more than the cost of the sidewalk.
Correct. And that's not including engineering fees.
Oh, okay.
Oh, that's right.
Okay, right.
So the engineering fees are gonna come out of our capital fund?
Oh, come out of the grant.
Okay, it still comes out of the grant, okay. Yeah, 'cause I was, I was concerned. I know we discussed this before. I just didn't want to see our capital money coming out of a project that's on 9A. It's a state road. So that, they want, they want the sidewalks and things, let them, let them put their money up.
And this will create a, a link to walk from. the main part of the village, the village circle, directly to Blakely and to Lenz Cove without having to get on the road there, without having to be on 9A on a busy road.
And, you know, they were very good to work with when the state did come in and do some work before in that area. They were excellent. I have to give them credit. They were wonderful to work with, so.
Marcus, do you have the plans for this sidewalk?
I can get it over to the whole board if you want.
Okay.
Oh, okay, I'd like to look at it. I mean, I'm.
Sure.
So we did.
I'd like to look at the plans too, Marcus.
Sure, no problem. Trying to see how they're tying into the existing portions.
Okay. So.
Is there any street lamps associated with this? Like decorative street lamps, or it's just sidewalk and curb?
Just sidewalk and curb, sir.
Sir, thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
So formal here.
I want your kids to hear that.
I'm hiding from them.
They'll find you. Okay, so we did, on a question, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's good. We can get that moving soon, hopefully. Okay, the next is, we discussed this at the workshop. We're going to call for a public hearing on September 7, 2021 to amend Chapter 21121 entitled yard screening to the code of the Village of Buchanan. And I think the biggest thing about this is that we didn't realize that, we didn't have it in our code, that the good neighbor fence policy. So what we'd like to do for all the properties in the village is the good fence would face the neighbor, and anyone who has an existing fence, it doesn't include you. So going forward, anybody that installs new fencing, they will, you know, they will have to face the good side to their neighbor. So on a motion to schedule the public hearing for September 7, 2021?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, good. All right, so, okay, the justice report, June 2021. We have two balances, $590 collected and $2675. Police report, Rich, if there's anything you'd like to go over after I'm done here. Highway report. You know what, I think it's kind of interesting. This is something I've never mentioned before, but, you know, what we collect in tonnage. So this is the June report. Just household trash alone is 86 tons. Bagged leaves and bundled clippings, 5.12. So, you know, people just don't have a concept of what gets picked up here in the village. So, thank you, Bob. Waste water plant, treated water, eight and a half million gallons. Building department, June 2021, seems like it was a pretty busy month. There's a lot of building permits issued. Let's see, COs, there's several of the COs that have been issued. I know they're also working on the accessory apartments, the renewal of the accessory apartments. Buchanan engine, does the chief, I see the chief here. Do you have any, anything this evening that you'd like to say?
No, nothing.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, does EMS assist, other emergencies, so the total of 18 calls. Okay, good. Thank you. Planning board minutes received and filed. Attorney's report, Stephanie, do you have anything for us this evening?
I do, but it's for executive session.
Okay, we will be going into executive session to discuss a personnel issue. Okay.
You look a little confused with that. What is it, was it?
When we make the motion, it's actually, it's a union issue. It does have to do with personnel. It also has to do with another issue with the union, both involving union.
Okay, all right.
Just to mention, Anthony just texted me he had to leave, so just to put on the record, he had to leave.
Oh, okay, no problem, no problem. And what I should put on the record too, Cindy, is that who was here in the room, and then also Trustee Funchen and Trustee Capicotti were, came in on Zoom. Thank you. Okay, Marcus, what do you have for us this evening?
Okay, a couple of things. As we discussed Route 9A, the additional funding is in the works. The DOT, the last report was the DOT. It was in the DOT's hands. After a month, the DOT came back to me, and they said they need another document from Ways and Means Committee. So I went back to the state. It's just one form. It had to be updated, so I sent it back to them, and now they're in the process of going back and forth. So there's been no threat of the money being removed. It's just the paperwork that they have to go through. So that's the Route 9A project. The pavilion, as we discussed, that's still in state hands. They still told me the funds are available. They just go into their process up at the state. We did receive the COVID funds, $130,000 we received. So we're working, as the board directed, to look at the pumps for the wastewater treatment plant and for the ceiling of manholes, as we discussed. So we're on the works of working with George and Todd to get those POs working and so we can get those projects done. We're going in WIC. Besides the building inspectors, I actually do fire inspections, working with the fire department. So I want to thank the fire department, working with the building department to do a fire safety inspection of the WIC. I don't think that's happened in a while, is to protect the fire department and the resident, well, the business owners hopefully will have a nice review of the WIC building. The insertion valve that we discussed, we had a problem with the water line, that the insertion valve has been installed. They're in the process now of flushing the system. As we understand, the building is very large, so each individual location now has to be flushed. So the water department is working with the owner of the property to flush all the lines, and hopefully that'll be up and running soon. The pool is working well. As we discussed, we shut off the waiting pool. The good news is, and Bob can testify, there've been no leaks. The water's holding up. We haven't lost, we have not lost water, and the chemicals are more controlled than they ever were before. So at least the pool is working better than it has in years. I want to thank Bob, working with the engineer, to get that up and running properly. Con Edison, as Trustee Murray said, George is still working. He's trying to finish up the total cost of the project from Blakely Avenue and Broadway to come out of a total cost of square footage for future permits. So he probably want to have something for the next workshop so the board can consider in regards to a change in the street opening permit fee and also a per linear foot or square footage blacktop to be done. And there'll be a sliding scale. The more you disturb, the more, the higher fee is going to be. So George will have that ready hopefully for the next workshop.
Okay, good.
Paving, related to paving. Paving, as they awarded the bid, the paving should start by the end of August. He's working with the contractor to get all the bids, I mean, not all the bids, to get all the insurance and bonds in place, and they're going to have a pre-construction meeting probably in the next two weeks, and then start working on the paving project. As soon as I get from the contractor an estimated start time or date and where they're going to be working, I'll let the board know, and we'll let the, we'll put it up on Facebook or something.
Yeah, let's do a code red so people know.
Yeah.
Also, please let me know, I did talk to a lot of the residents on Henry Street, and there's several that don't want the curbing. So, you know, before the construction starts, I did talk to George. You know, I was out with George Palmer the other day, walking around the village, talking about a few things, and on Henry Street, I did run into another one of the residents there and said, no, they didn't want it. So I just want to make sure, you know, there's only one other person I have to catch up with, so.
Okay.
Just curious, why would somebody not want the curb?
They feel, one person felt that they could park closer. They park closer to get their groceries out, and they felt the curb would come out too far. And they've had the property like that, I can't even tell you how many years. There was one area where it was not a good place to put it because it would have to be all of a drop curb. So if you're going to put all of a drop curb, there's like, you know, George said, what's the point? So, yeah, there's just one other person I have to catch up with to see what their thoughts are. I mean, I like the curb. It keeps the, you know, the property in, and it's good when they come out to use the street sweeper. You know, it just, it does a nicer job. There's no runoff. So I personally like curbs, but it's not for every place in the village.
Yeah, when they, going back to paving, when they do that, as far as I know, no streets will be closed. There'll be flagmen controlling the traffic, but as soon as I get that information, I'll forward it to the board and everybody else. Next, the DEC, George finally heard back from the DEC. They are requiring a permit if you go a certain amount into the water, which we have to go. So he came back, and he said if the board is willing to move forward with this, that his fee to fill out the permit and get a scope of work together and get plans together will be $3,500. If the board is okay to move forward, then he'll get the permits into the DEC and also start working on plans and specifications to go out to bid. He said it shouldn't be that much money to do the work, but he needs to get the permit out to the DEC first.
Okay, well, then it's also, we still needed to discuss if we were going to be able to remove that? If we're going to remove concrete?
Correct.
And add any?
Correct.
Gravel or whatever?
Correct.
If we're doing that on our own, we maybe just need to put together the total cost?
Yeah, he'll do that as part of the scope of work, yeah. But to start the process with DEC and start that working, his estimate of cost will be $3,500.
Let's get the numbers together as a total, and then.
Well, he won't know what the total cost of pricing is going to be until we get a scope of work together.
All right, so is that something we're actually supposed to answer now or next workshop?
If you want him to, yeah, we can wait till the work. He's just, he's going to just delay the project. It depends on what you guys want to do.
Okay.
Workshop, or you want to go for it now?
Workshop.
Maybe George will have some more information for us by then. And then, you know, any of the trustees can go over to look over at Lenz Cove, where we used to have a boat launch years ago.
Now we have corroded concrete.
Yeah, it's corroded concrete, and we really can't use it as a boat launch anymore unless it's dredged, and dredging is expensive, so.
And paddle sports have gotten very popular.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. You know, not only kayaks, but it could be a canoe too, so it could be anything.
Yeah, when I go canoeing, I have a canoe and a kayak, and when I go out, these days, half of the people are on paddle boards. Just, you know, the stand-up ones, even if they're sitting on them, they're stand-up usually, yeah.
You see the new ones? They're like Stairmasters? You can actually, has the little paddles in the back, and you actually walk up and down on it.
Who knows, maybe swan boats will come back.
Yeah.
I like that.
The last item is, as we discussed, there was a little border issue between the city and the village on Lenz Cove. So actually, they reached out to the city. They don't see any, I talked to the manager and the assessor and the attorney. They don't see a problem with them releasing that property and transferring, do a de-transfer, not a de-transfer, what happened changed the boundary lines between the village and the city, so therefore, the village property will actually be one of the Village of Buchanan. So they're going to talk to the city council in September and get back to me.
Can we change the border a little further north so that they then have to pay us taxes for Finnenbrough?
Don't push it, Nick. We're lucky. We're lucky. Thank you for doing that, Marcus. I'm sure that was a difficult conversation.
That's actually, thank you.
Appreciate that.
One question I have on your report, Marcus. You had mentioned a fire inspector. I know we don't have a fire inspector now, but the resolutions that we passed for hiring the building inspector, I don't remember if it included those fire inspector duties. So it is in his contract, and he is trained and qualified for that?
Oh, yeah.
I remember we had sent our last fire inspector to special training to allow him to testify in court.
Yeah, to be a fire inspector, just to let you know, to be a building inspector, you've got to qualify, you've got to be code enforcement and a fire inspector before you become a building inspector. So fire inspection is one of the lower classes, per se. You've got to take six classes to be a building inspector. We include fire inspection.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, I am going to defer to the other trustees. We'll start with Trustee Murray.
Thanks. A couple of things I'd like to discuss at the next workshop meeting. One was the firefighter exemption law that we had spoken about. I don't remember if it was the last workshop or the workshop before that. We never had any update on that. We had also mentioned last month about what we're going to do with the fire truck that is going to be sent to us after the new fire engine is installed in the firehouse. That's going to revert to us. It'll become our responsibility for storage as well as the maintenance. We were discussing putting it up for bid or declaring it a surplus issue. I'd just like to have that discussed at the next workshop meeting. Also, we had left out a couple of things about talking to the town of Cortland about tying in with the sewer as well as cost estimates for the county to take it over and make it into a transfer station. We haven't had any updates on that. If you could just give me an update where that's going. So I know you don't have to give me any answers now. I'd just like these included in the workshop. Also, last week, I had gotten some questions, as well as read some Facebook posts, as well as some news posts in the Northern Westchester Examiner about a battery storage facility at the Sheet Rock facility. One thing that was mentioned was that the board of trustees were briefed on the project, as well as the town of Cortland council. I don't know what happened in the town, but I know I wasn't briefed on it. And so just to let you know, what was reported was that there was going to be a battery storage facility proposed at the Sheet Rock plant on Broadway, the former Lafarge of St. Goblen, I believe it's called now, to have the battery pack in the parking lot. That's, obviously, will have to be discussed with the planning board. I don't know if that's actually a zone for that right now. Because it is not a generation facility. It's a stored energy facility. It does not generate power. It discharges power, okay? So it's not a generating facility. That was something that was also incorrectly mentioned in the Northern Westchester Examiner. When I found out about it, I called Marcus. I don't know if they got a response, but when I checked the Facebook post, I didn't see any corrections to that. So I just want, people from the public were asking me, as well as another trustee about it, and that was the first we heard about it when it was reported. I'd also, over the last couple of weeks, I've been speaking with a lot of residents throughout the village, and it's been pretty eye-opening. A lot of people have some issues, and they're relatively simple issues. Some of them, we had talked about the light posts that have been knocked down on Westchester Avenue. I know one of them was a result of a DWI accident that happened two years ago, which we should have been able to get money back to install the light poles. They're pretty tired of seeing the cones sitting there with the potential of having exposed wires. I know Bob said he was going to take care of the wires last year. But people wanted a little bit of work put into some things that are relatively simple. Another one issue was the crossing walks at the circle on Tate Avenue, as well as the crosswalks on Tate Avenue down by King's Ferry Road. They're not very well, they're not very well painted. A couple of people had mentioned that when they were walking, they didn't even know they were coming in because they weren't paying attention. And I said, well, maybe you should pay a little bit better attention. They said, well, if we had some reflective paint, that might be a little bit better. Another resident was a little angry about some issues, and one of the things that he used to do was pick up garbage in one of the parking lots that were near one of his buildings. And he doesn't do it anymore, so I had said, well, maybe we could put in some garbage cans. Because I don't remember there being any garbage cans near our municipal parking lots. Walt Disney said many years ago, one of the reasons why there's not a lot of garbage laying around is because he has a garbage can every 30 feet, because he did a study and said nobody's going to walk more than 30 feet to throw something away. So maybe we should put a couple of municipal garbage cans on Tate Avenue across from the restaurant, as well as maybe a couple down the road and some other areas. I had mentioned last month that our July 27 board meeting wasn't posted on the calendar. Although it was posted on the front of the newsletter, it wasn't posted on the calendar. And this meeting wasn't posted anyplace because we didn't get the newsletters until yesterday. And the village website wasn't updated until, I think, Saturday night or Sunday afternoon of the meeting. So we should have a little bit better notification of the meetings and what's on the agenda. Our agendas are generally set at the workshop meeting, so I don't see why we have to wait until the weekend before the meeting to post our agendas, unless there's some issue that I'm not aware of.
Yeah, absolutely, Cindy, please.
The website master lady told us like Thursday night that she was all hung Friday, so that's why I think it posted on Friday, so she did it.
Yes, she did. I think it was on Sunday.
She does it on Friday.
Well, the open meeting law requires us to notify the public 72 hours in advance, and since the newsletter didn't come out until yesterday, and the website posting wasn't until Sunday, I don't know really if this is really a legal meeting because the public didn't have 72 hours notification of a meeting, unless they just remembered that the meeting is the first day of Tuesday.
Well, that's the postal just won't have to deliver the things we've sent them out.
I understand. I'm just saying, we shouldn't be waiting to the last minute to notify the public of the content of our meetings or when our meetings are scheduled. You know, this has happened a couple of times, you know, for different reasons, for. You know, this, this has happened a couple of times, you know, for different reasons, for different things. I had also asked a couple of weeks ago if we have a, the labor attorney's report as well as the prosecutor's activity report. We haven't received anything in our packet, I know we did two months ago. We didn't receive anything last month or this month. So I was wondering if we're not, if we're going to get bills for things that they did in June and July without having an activity report reviewed. So I think we should be getting these reports, even if it says no action taken, nothing occurred this week or nothing occurred this month, we should at least know what our vendors or contractors are doing. Also, last month when I was removed from the contract negotiations, we were going to have a meeting to discuss things with the negotiator in an executive session to discuss things that we might want to see changed. I was wondering if we're going to have that meeting at some time. Is there anything scheduled with the negotiator or contract negotiation scheduled? So those are the things I would like to have addressed.
Sure.
So hopefully we can have some answers at the next workshop meeting. And one other thing, I'm sorry, oh, you know, I'll go over that next month.
Marcus, would you like to respond to any of them?
Nothing on labor attorney, I know there was a discussion between him and the representative for the police union. So I'll see if there's any update and I'll ask the prosecutor why he didn't provide a report. I did contact him to provide a report, he didn't bring in yet, so I'll make sure we get something for the next meeting.
Because the last time I asked about this with the negotiations, I was told and the board was told that before any negotiation started, he would meet with us in executive session to discuss anything we would like changed. So that's not the chain of events that's going to occur, apparently.
No, no, they, they haven't scheduled any time in regards to where we're going to meet yet and he's, and labor, labor attorney is gathering some additional information from other municipalities so he can give you a sense of what everybody else is agreeing to in the area, so that way you get an idea. So he's gathering data to give you a full, a full picture.
So he did start, but he said he did start talking to the union.
No, he's saying, can we, can we schedule a time in the future for we can start meeting?
Oh, so he hasn't spoken to the union?
No, they haven't set up a meeting yet, they spoke about setting up a meeting in the future, they haven't set that up yet.
Thanks.
Trustee Zachary, you're still writing, you're scaring me now.
No, I'm just writing down the things that trustee Murray wants to discuss because I think they're all important. Thank you, just a couple of things. On the health front, just a word to residents, I, I tend to do a lot of outdoor stuff, but twice this spring and summer, just after entertaining in my backyard on a mowed lawn, I found ticks on myself after and actually pulled a total of four ticks off myself this spring. Thought as a precaution I'd go get a test for Lyme disease and indeed I do have it. I'm in the middle of the antibiotics for it, caught it early, I'm not really concerned, you know, but if you do not catch it and it gets to an advanced point, you could have serious health consequences. So a precaution, don't assume because you're not out in tall, in tall wheat fields or rubbing up against shrubbery in a park, just because it's your backyard, don't assume there's no ticks. Do, when you're doing outdoor stuff, you know, when you shower, just check for ticks. They're very hard to see, especially if you're a hairy Greek like me, but, you know, but be careful and if you're doing a lot of outdoor stuff, maybe, or if you find ticks on yourself, maybe at some point get a precautionary test for Lyme. There can be false negatives and false positives, it's not the most accurate test in the world, but, you know, it could be done and then repeated a few weeks later, but, but just be, be careful. Ticks, everyone's so concerned with COVID, they forgot that there are other health hazards, so the ticks are still out there, they don't know about COVID. They're still doing their thing. As far as COVID, I said something at last meeting, at the end of the meeting about, you know, there's no more unless you have a health condition, just get out there and get the vaccine. A resident afterwards commented that I should be more understanding of people's reasons and guess what, I'm not. If you haven't gotten the vaccine and you don't have a health reason for doing, for not doing so, you're kind of screwing it up for everybody because we're trying to get back to normal and now we're getting a resurgence. So I'm going to, afraid to say, that's my feeling. Everyone who's not getting a vaccine is only hurting the cause. It has nothing to do with political party, it has nothing to do with personal freedoms. When I was a kid in school, everybody had to get the measles vaccine before they attended, whatever it was, second grade or third grade. You know, it's, it's a health issue for the public, do your bit for everybody, including yourself and your family and get the damn vaccine. I just want to say I'll be, remind everybody, I'll be away for a couple of weeks, including the next workshop. I'm going to be in the mountains out west, I don't know what, if I have service and I can, there'll be a time difference also, so I'm not sure that I'll be able to attend that next workshop, even though there's a lot of items for discussion that I don't want, that I'd like to be part of, unless you all want to move the workshop to the, to the thirty-first.
We can come out west too, Nick.
Oh, yeah, or you'll come out.
API Coyote.
Yeah, let's head out to the Cascades with me. But anyway, if I can, I will, I'll attend on Zoom, if, if, you know, I don't know if I'm going to have a signal, I don't know what. I'll be with other people, I, I can't change everybody's plans for a day, you know, so I'll figure that one out. And also, another topic that I want to make sure we don't, that we get back to is the rezoning for the Indian Point parcel. And I think we left off after we met one planner that we would, I think, when we spoke. I'd like to have the other planner come talk to the board so that we can.
He's scheduled to come at the next workshop.
He's coming at the next workshop, all right.
Unless he's not going to be down, I don't know if you want to poke fun.
Well, you know what, when I see the agenda, I can, if I can't, I'll certainly email my comments. You all, you know, if, if, for what it's worth, but I'll see what I could do for the next meeting, but, all right. Four out of, four out of five ain't bad if I'm not here. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Nick, trustee Funchen, what do you have for us this evening?
Thank you, mayor, well, the police report, on the June tenth, Officer Palmetto had to go searching for somebody who was lost and thank, thank God he found them and brought them home. On the eleventh, Officer Palmetto and Greg had to deal with, involve a disorderly person. Or I would kind of almost read into that into an argument, because people have an arguments. And which is probably the thing that law enforcement people dislike the most, of getting in between two people having an argument because the hairs for the officer doesn't usually bode good. So a good thank you to Officer Palmetto and Greg. Officer Bud on the thirtieth of June responded to a domestic dispute. Again, another area where law enforcement hates to be involved in because it, they usually come off as the enemy between the two people arguing, but in this particular case, Officer Buddy made an arrest for misdemeanor, misdemeanor event. He didn't indicate what the misdemeanor event was. I have finished my meeting with the, all the officers and with the chief. And I observed that the, the chief, Chief Farrell is running an excellent office, he's, he's an excellent chief. He is respected by all the officers and returns that respect. And that's the sign of a really good supervisor, good leader, that, that the respect goes both ways, up and down. That I noticed that there was also, the, the chief has put out a new, if you notice, the report form was a little more intense and more specific, so it looks even better than the one we used to be getting. And there's two things on, what Sean said, one thing on the, the monthly, the monthly letter we get. I, myself and many other people I've spoken to have experienced problems with the post office. There's been a lot of complaints about the new management of the post office. Two or three months I didn't get my, my letter until three days after the beginning of the month. So, and, and one month I didn't get it at all. So I, I think that problem is with the post office. But on the agenda, Sean, I've been on board since two thousand and ten and since two thousand and ten, every meeting I've ever gone to, the agenda comes out on Friday. So I, I don't think there's any difference in that, that's been going on since, since I've been here, I know that before two thousand and ten. Well, thank you.
All right, thank you, Rich. First of all, I'd, I'd like to thank our first responders. I'd like to thank the Chief Farrell and his officers and also Chief Andy Roush of the Fire Department. I had two instances where I needed an ambulance for my mom in the month of July. And you don't know until you need help, you know, you pick up the call, you pick up the phone, you dial nine-one-one, you're, you're like flipping out, you don't know what to do, but I, I want to tell you how quickly not only the police department was there, the fire department was there, everybody was there to help. And that's very comforting when you're in a situation like that, so I appreciate, you know, that and I appreciate, you know, everything you do for the residents, you come out and you help them. It's very, you know, it's a scary situation, so it's good to know somebody's coming to your door pretty quickly. The other thing, I'm going to just, a few things, Sean, the town of Cortland, we are going to give you an update at the workshop. Also, normally our, our, when we talk about our, the agenda going out and, and everything being online, I just want to tell you, I, we are very, very fortunate to have Cindy and we are very fortunate to have Sharon. I don't think everybody realizes this, because I know a lot of places were complaining that, you know, their, their city hall, their village halls were closed, I can honestly say Sharon and Cindy kept this village operational. There wasn't a day that that village office was shut downstairs. So whatever happened with these glitches, I'm sure the ladies will address it, they, you know, their heart is really in the village and they could have told us different things, that they weren't coming in, they were afraid of the COVID. But thank God, this village was constantly operational because of those two, they, it's their dedication and it's appreciated. People know, people see it, so we appreciate that. And the one thing about the paper, I, I thought I had responded to you, I'm sorry, I, I thought I had.
What paper?
The newspaper article, I thought I had, okay, so the papers don't always get everything right. I did have a conversation with this group and it was just a conversation, Marcus was there, they gave me a presentation. I told them that we were just in the process of rezoning the property and that it was a little premature for them to have that discussion, so why they went off on that tangent, I don't know.
Well, we're not rezoning the Sheet Rock plant.
Well, we, they were, they're looking to expand, they're not, that's not just it, they're looking, they're, they're looking to run amok. So, you know, they, they, I said, you know what, I really have to talk to the board, we're, we're talking about rezoning. So that's one of the things, you know, I want to talk to the board, are they interested in having something like that? So just keep that in mind, is that something in the future, we want to have those battery storage places? I understand they can be dangerous, the lithium batteries, so I don't know, we have to do a lot more research. So I, I didn't ask them to come into the village board, we kind of got ourselves in a little trouble once before because right away they'll ask for a zoning text amendment and so I just, I said, you know what, let's, we're working on things now, it's a little premature, so we'll get there. The light posts, Bob, how long ago, we ordered those, like, how long ago on West?
This season, two days ago.
You're kidding, wow, oh, my God, that's what, six months?
They said twelve to sixteen weeks, it's been all sixteen weeks.
Oh, my God, yeah, it's been a while, I remember, I remember voting on that and you had ordered them, thank you. The garbage, Nick, I'm going to put, take this over to you. I know a lot of other communities are still doing like, like the Earth Day thing or whatever, you know, if you're interested, if the village is interested in having a cleanup day in September, October, we have to work with the union, but, you know, something to think about to schedule something like that. Do we ever have those gar, do we ever have garbage cans over in that parking lot? Across from Fat Sal's, I don't ever remember that, okay, well, if there's garbage all over, even if we put one garbage can, I guess. Okay, thank you. All right, so now I can go into my stuff, I'm sorry, I, I had to answer that. One of the first things I'd like to tell you, the Westchester County sales tax, we get it quarterly. We got, it's coming in tomorrow, I think, a hundred and thirty, a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. So compared to second quarter last year, and remember COVID, remember we were in the middle of that. Last year we got ninety thousand, three hundred dollars. So that's an increase of almost forty-seven thousand dollars in sales tax, which sounds wonderful, but let's, let's be cautious too, because we don't know where COVID is going, it's starting to kick up. We do have it in the village, I just want to let people know. In July, we had four positive cases, which I know isn't a lot, I know that, but August first, we already have one case. So let's all be careful out there, just, you know, just, just be careful, this is highly contagious. I, I don't want to go into a lockdown situation again, nobody wants to do that. So that was good news with our sales tax. Also, let's see, where are we, I have, I have a whole bunch of stuff today, holy, holy cow. Also, remember August twenty-first, Cindy, please remind me to do a code red for the Fire Department. The Cortland Engine Company is having their annual bazaar and we, of course, we all, always support our neighbors. They will be lining up on Bannon Avenue and I believe part of Seward Street, so we want to let the residents know about that. So we'll do a code red to remind everybody. On September twenty-fifth, and talking about COVID, let's see what happens, I'm not sure. Normally in September, we have a Buchanan Day, so depending where, where we are with COVID, we're having a Buchanan Community Day, we're asking the village's very own Dennis Blakely from Six String Country. He will be the entertainment, the Fire Department has agreed to do the hot dogs and hamburgers, thank you very much. And the Police Department will be giving out ice cream, thank you very much. And so let's see, that's in motion, that.
September twenty-fifth?
Yes, and that money, we're, we're still organizing some things yet. That money is, it's not taxpayer dollars, once again, that's money I have gotten over the years from Entergy for an event, Buchanan Day or whatever other event. I am also working on Whole Tech to give us money for a Community Day too. The grant was submitted for our wastewater plant last week, so we continue to work on the wastewater plant. Let's see if we can get some funding for that, and I know, Sean, you had mentioned something. I am meeting with the county this month, the meeting date was changed, so I am in discussions with the county about our wastewater plant, what we can do with that. And I have an announcement to make, I'm very proud of this. This year's nine eleven ceremony, the town of Cortland is the sponsor this year. And the speaker this year will be our very own trustee, Richard Funchen, who's a survivor of nine eleven. So congratulations, Rich, I'm, I'm very happy that you are the speaker and I'm, I'm sure it'll be a wonderful speech.
Thank you very much, Eric.
Let's see, we, we had worked on, we started working on the Veterans Banner Program and I looked into it and the problem is that you have to guarantee them thirty banners. So I've spoken to the town of Cortland and asked them if we could go under their umbrella to, to do this and they have agreed. So we'll send out next newsletter information on how to be involved in that. And also, you know, to let people know, I've formed a committee and I'm looking at someone else right now that I would like to have on that committee, thank you very much. He's like, no, not me, so it's the, it's the Veterans banners that you see on nine A. So the Buchanan ones will go from the train, the train tracks there up to the border of Montrose. Also, something else I have been working on for a while, because those banners are nice, but they're only put up once. I've seen, I don't know if anybody else has seen in Carmel, they have the, the flags by the lake, Stephanie knows, and it's just beautiful when you see it on Memorial Day. And it's just beautiful when you see it on Memorial Day or, or whatever holiday. And I thought what might be nice, that could be done annually every year for Memorial Day, July 4th, Veterans Day, to fly those flags. And they're full, they're like a full-size flag. And what we could do is offer to people to put the family name or the person, the veteran's name on those flags. And then we could put, line them up in front of Village Hall, kind of like what we do now with the short little flags. But these would be the larger flags and the family name could be either engraved or some type of a thing on there. So, each year, we would continuously use those. I think that would really look pretty in front of Village Hall. So, that's part of the committee working on that. And I'm still working on, I know trustee Pasquale, when he was here, he spoke about a tree to honor those we lost with COVID. So, we'll still continue, continue to work with that. We need to find a place where we're going to put that tree, perhaps Lynx Cove. You know, I, I don't know, but we're working on that. We are working on recarpeting the third floor where we are now because the orange carpeting with the red chairs is kind of not matching. So...
It's kind of psychedelic.
Yeah, yeah, it's kind of, no. So, we, that's, that's no taxpayer dollars. Once again, that's a grant that I had gotten from Entergy. So, we will be able to replace the orange carpet. And I know I've been teased many years by the attorneys that come here. And they always comment on our orange carpet and they tease me. So, yeah. So, it's, this carpet is, oh, my gosh. Cindy, what was it, 19?
196 or 197.
So, we really got our money's worth out of this carpet. So, it would, it'll just spiff up the third floor. Also, in that funding I got from Entergy, we are going to be doing the community room downstairs. We're starting to have problems with those tables. They're old tables. One of the round tables broke. So, we're going to be looking to replace those tables. And, and we did get some chairs from Entergy, or Holtech, that we can use in the community room. And then we'll see whatever else we need. What else do we have going? Busy, busy. There is something else, and I just don't remember what it is. But, one of the things, for those that know Josie Vabrik, even if you don't know Josie Vabrik, she's a lovely woman. She has been a longtime Buchanan resident. She is turning on August 20th, 101 years old. It just, and she's just still very, you know, very peppy, very with it, very, just a vibrant person. She's currently at the Montrose Veterans Nursing Home. So, you know, I, I'm going to send flowers from the board for her birthday. And I'm, I'm sure she'll appreciate that. What else do I have? That was a lot. I know. I'm sorry. So, yeah, just a lot of good things going on. So, got a lot of things working. But to me, the most important thing is the sewer treatment plant. It's a huge asset to the village. And if we can get money to rehab it, that's a huge win for us. So, all right. Any comments from the floor? No? Any, any comments from TV land? No? Nobody's quiet. All right. Okay. I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss union personnel issues. Thank you all for coming.